Session, time clerk. Roll.
The record will show that all members are present.
Thank you. Okay, first up is clarification of items on the consent calendar. We'll start with Councilwoman Gardner.
Yes, item number nine, we talk about the Buckgully project and we talk about controlling sediment, and I'm concerned that that simply means blocking sediment because as we know from our studies, what sediment there is at Little Corona comes down from Buckgully. We are getting less because of the buildup of the watershed, so it's critical that we get as much as possible.
So, is there a clarification, or are you pulling that item?
No, I just want to point that out, and that will be looked at, I'm sure. Secondly, on number 12, we have a couple of assessment districts there. Are they recent, do we know if their recent assessments, have they gotten their bids recently, or are we in a position where they got?
That's not 12.
These aren't bids, these are requests to increase the engineering fees. Like for instance, the one in my area, Mariners Mile.
I know, but I guess I'm asking because if we're going to pay more money, are we going to be in the same situation? I just wondered how long ago the bids had been given out to the people.
Councilwoman Gardner, I'm planning to pull that item for a fuller discussion.
And then on the last one, number 14, which is the mooring thing, and we talked about the question, one response, answer, which is, we haven't established that they're private profits. Can we really, is that really a logical statement to make? I thought it was well accepted, people were making profits all over the place.
If I might comment on that, because I was intending to pull it this evening, is there isn't any economic analysis that establishes that profits are being made, so.
Okay, well, you're going to pull it anyway, so let's not have any further discussion about it right now.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
No questions. I was going to pull that, really to give the community visibility on what we're doing there, and I wanted to point out our Harvard Resources staff, Tom Ross Miller and Chris Miller, and just thank them for all the hard work on that issue and all the other stuff that you're working on, so, thanks.
Councilwoman Redd?
I have none.
Councilwoman Hen?
I have two. On this Homeland Security grant transfer, can somebody just give me like a 15-second overview of what the overall effect of this transfer is? It was kind of hard to figure out from all the pieces that were included in that.
I'm looking for Steve Lewis, and he is looking down. Steve, the question was, what is being included in this transfer for item number five? Well, this was 2006.
Correct. It does take a long time for, if you go back in the grant process, sometimes we're getting funding now that's coming from 2006, 2005's closed out, so it does go back, so those transfers.
This is just a paper over something that's already happened.
Already happened.
That's all I need to know. And then on item number 16, the police video system, which I'm in favor of, but it does seem like we've wound up with single-source bids in our police department bidding. Somehow or another, there seems to be, at the end of the day, only one man standing on our bids in the police department. It's possible I have a misconception on that, but I guess it's perhaps in some other forum at a later date, I'd like to see if I'm factually correct about that or not. Okay? It's just a little bit of concerning to me.
Councilwoman Curry? No items. Councilwoman Saj?
Yeah, also on 16, I'd be interested to know what the useful life is of this DVR system, since we're talking about maybe replacing the police facility, and does it make sense to spend this kind of money on a system like this with the years that are remaining on that building? And I guess is it something that you can pick up and move to another building, or it's something that if we replace the police facility, we lose this?
Okay, and I have none. Okay, moving on to our study session, our first item review. Now, you wanted to take this out of order, Homer?
I did. I don't know how many members of the community are here, but I thought, since the notice went out and we told them that the study session would begin at four, that we might want to take the Big Canyon Project first. But before we do that, I would like to introduce our newest department head, Steve Mider, who is the utilities director, who is meeting the city council for the first time, and I ask him to step up to the microphone and introduce himself to the council.
You the one with the sweaty palms?
Only temporarily.
Well, thank you, Homer. It's an honor to be part of the team, definitely, the city team. Just a, you know, kind of quick background of my professional experiences. I kind of have a unique experience between the public sector, private sector. Spent a good portion of my, first part of my career actually planning, building, designing water systems, and about 12 years ago or so, I decided to take my talents and kind of get involved more in the public sector. I actually ran the engineering group and the various operation divisions in Long Beach as far as their city water department and wastewater department. And then from there, went to be the utility director for City of Paramount, and there I am today. As far as, as far as personal time, when I had the weekends, I have two small children, so that keeps my wife and I very busy, I must admit, but I still do manage some sailing. I love to sailboat race, and of course Newport's got the best sailing, so that's fantastic. So I look forward to being part of the team, absolutely.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard.
Dave, are you still okay with us taking that Big Canyon Restoration Project?
Why, sure. It looks like our consultant is here, so we are ready to go. Let me introduce.
Does anybody on the council have any objection to taking these out of order? No? Okay, fine. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this next discussion is one of two public opportunities to hear again about the Big Canyon Creek Restoration Project. It's going to be presented by our public works consultant, Mark Reader, and available for comments is our lead consultant on the projects, that's Lon Weber of WRC. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council and concerned public. My name is Mark Reader, and I'm the public works project manager for the Big Canyon Creek Restoration Project. I am joined today by Dr. Lon Weber of WRC Consulting, and as Dave mentioned, she is the lead consultant for the project. The consulting team has prepared various technical studies and analysis, which is included in the project feasibility report. The result of this work has been compiled into a conceptual restoration plan, and at this time, we are moving through the CEQA process and to adopt a mitigated negative declaration for the project. I'd like to proceed with a brief explanation of the project, and then myself and Dr. Weber will be available to answer questions after the presentation. The Big Canyon Creek watershed covers approximately two square miles and drains directly into upper Newport Bay. The watershed conveys urban runoff through the 60-acre Big Canyon Nature Park, which is located between Jamboree Road and Back Bay Drive. The nature park receives urban runoff and serves as a natural buffer zone between urbanized areas and upper Newport Bay. Natural tidal flow through the canyon was eliminated in the 1930s with the construction of Back Bay Drive. Approximately five acres of tidal wetlands were removed by this construction. Also, through the years, dredged materials were placed at the mouth of Big Canyon, which has resulted in large areas of saline and infertile soils, which cannot support native plant communities. A freshwater pond was constructed in the 1980s but is now a very shallow pond with sediment. The lower 10 acres of Big Canyon Creek is within the Newport, upper Newport Bay Ecological Reserve, and this area of Big Canyon is listed as an impaired water body due to the high level of constituents of concern flowing into the bay. Unfiltered urban runoff carried by Big Canyon is a water quality issue, having potential negative impacts on upper Newport Bay and the nearly 500 species of animals, fish, and plants that reside in the bay. In 2003, Community Conservancy International, CCI, led a project team to address various issues within the Big Canyon Nature Park. The CCI project team met with various public agencies, conservation organizations, and one public workshop was held to review and comment on the needs within Big Canyon. CCI directed a team of biologists, engineers, scientists, and restoration specialists to conduct scientific research and analysis to develop possible restoration alternatives. In April 2004, CCI completed their Phase One report and made the following recommendations: Restore the historic tidal zone to create five acres of tidal wetlands; improve water quality issues; restore a functioning complex of wetlands, freshwater marsh, riparian, and upland habitats; improve public trail access, scenic opportunities, and interpretive facilities; remove invasive non-native plants; encourage public participation and provide educational opportunities; and provide recreational opportunities. In August 2005, the city selected WRC and its consultant team to move forward with Phase Two of the project. The consultant team has at this time completed the feasibility assessment of the project, water quality analysis, and preliminary engineering. WRC has worked closely with the stakeholders and the city to develop the conceptual plan as shown here. The features of the plan include restore tidal marsh. The historic tidal wetlands at the mouth of Big Canyon will be restored by dredging and realigning Back Bay Drive to this location here, inland along the historic extent of the tidal marsh. The existing parking lot, that's located here, will be relocated inland into the new interpretive area. This tidal marsh will be planted with native species already found on site. A plant survey was conducted by WRA, the biologist consultant, to determine which plant species are native within the upper Newport Bay, and thus recommended for replanting at various elevations depending on their ranges for survival. Realign Back Bay Drive to continue to allow visitors to come for the spectacular views of upper Newport Bay. The road will continue to support vehicle traffic in one direction, as well as a bicycle pedestrian path as currently exists. Shallow box culverts are proposed to allow runoff from Big Canyon Creek to enter the bay. Currently, the existing three 12-inch culverts below Back Bay Drive is a barrier to natural tidal flows and sediment movement. Additionally, the constricted drainage has created serious flooding problems during winter storms resulting in repeated and expensive damage to Back Bay Drive. The new culverts are sized to convey 100-year storm, about 2,300 CFS, and will facilitate the mixing of salt and freshwater to allow gradual transition from salt marsh to riparian upland habitat. This will also provide all-weather access across the mouth of Big Canyon. The existing freshwater marsh extends from Back Bay Drive to the mid-service road crossing. The existing freshwater marsh area, which is in this area here, will be significantly reduced to provide for tidal marsh restoration. The marsh will be regraded to provide for better pollutant removal function per unit area than currently exists, and provides an opportunity to establish other species that are currently excluded by cattails in the current marsh area. The mid-canyon service road crossing, which is located here, the culverts will be designed to handle low flows up to 50 CFS. The lower pond outlet will be widened with multiple shallow pipes. A great control pool made of stones and soil cement will be located downstream of the freshwater pond, and as well as an open water zone for treatment. During a major storm event, flows will top over the service road, and the roadway will act as an Arizona crossing. The service road crossing and culverts will be designed such the series of two freshwater ponds can be constructed upstream and will act as habitat areas and water quality elements. These lower and upper freshwater ponds will provide combined filtration and impoundment function and will act as natural filters to assist in preventing pollutants such as sediments, metals, bacteria, nutrients from entering Newport Bay. Ongoing maintenance will need to be provided to remove sediments as they accumulate in the ponds. These ponds will be serviced with service roads. Upstream, the existing drainage course will remain as a natural course, and there is some plans for regrading to remove stagnant water. With the black shaded areas here, invasive species are proposed to be removed throughout the Big Canyon Nature Park. Habitat will be enhanced by removing species such as the Brazilian pepper tree and lollipop tree, which exclude native species. Restoration of the tidal marsh and freshwater marsh will consist of species found on site. The riparian woodlands and riparian scrub habitats will be planted in areas opened up by the removal of exotic species. The feasibility report lists native species to be planted in these areas, and a landscape planting plan will be prepared in the final design.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
In terms of those current species, how do they come to colonize this environment?
What I'd like to do is, if I could continue and then I could bring up Dr. Weber to answer any questions, but I know that we are counting on dry weather flows to bring water into the canyon and to keep the habitats alive.
Okay, so you're the engineer, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
For the public use areas, visitors come to Big Canyon for the spectacular views of the upper Newport Bay, wildlife observation, and educational opportunities. Preservation of this unique setting is highly valued by the community. Accommodating the needs of visitors must be balanced against protecting the fragile habitats. The strategic placement of trails, boardwalks, and observation decks will allow visitors to explore the canyon without degrading the various resources that attract them to the site. Newport Bay Naturalist and Friends, various school districts, and scout troops sponsor a wide range of programs and activities in the bay. The concept plan provides for better circulation and visitor experience to Big Canyon. Trail connections are proposed throughout the existing trail system, as shown here in Park benches can be placed with canopy trees to provide a resting place for visitors to take in the views. The existing parking lot, which currently parks 35 cars, will be relocated into this interpretive area to accommodate the same number of 35 cars. There will also be a school bus drop-off area to allow for two school buses to come in and drop off schoolchildren. A 100-seat amphitheater, which is basically located here, is proposed to seat for outdoor educational opportunities, and it is located away from Back Bay Drive. A series of hand retractable canvas cloths will be provided as overhead shade during use. Access to the amphitheater is provided from the arrival drop-off area. Restroom facilities will be provided as portable chemical facilities and will be housed in masonry structures, which blends in with the surrounding habitats. An ADA accessible facility will be provided. An observation deck is provided for visitors to gain a higher elevation for enhanced viewing of upper Newport Bay and the restored Big Canyon Creek. A permanently mounted view scope and informational media will be provided throughout the site, such as flipbook field guides, which will enhance wildlife viewing experiences. Other overlooked locations will be provided throughout the site, as noted by the letters E. Those are a little tough to see, I understand, but we will have other opportunities to view the site. What are the next steps? We're currently in the comment period for the CEQA process. Today's meeting advertises a public meeting. There is another meeting scheduled for August 1st at 6:30 at the Bluffs Community Room at Vista del Oro, and the comment period closes August 17th. And after that, the council would adopt the mitigated negative declaration after staff responds to comments from the MND. And from then, from there on, we can proceed with the agency permitting, final engineering, and seek sources of funding to proceed with the project. This completes my presentation of the Big Canyon Creek Restoration Project, and at this time, Dr. Weber and myself are available for any questions.
I have a couple of questions. The, I'm very glad to see that in this study, maintenance was considered. So often, we do a project and don't think about the ongoing maintenance. The sediment on those ponds, about how much sediment do we anticipate? What are we going to do with it? Do we have any idea of what our ongoing costs are going to be at this point for maintenance?
I don't know if we, go ahead, Lon. I don't know if we have figured out a true cost for maintenance.
Well, sediment is a problem, but we don't think it's a major problem, just because the upstream watershed are mostly urbanized. The, most of the sediments contributing that we have to deal with is really is from the area and the flow that's not mined, you know, not vegetated or not concrete mined. For example, just upstream has a small area, and the Big Canyon country club has some low-flow area, but it's highly controlled because Gulf Coast has a larger, a few lakes that really serve to control the sediment. So we don't really anticipate a major, major sediment problem. So more in the design, it's more for incidental, some of the unmined creek area and even our own creek itself, because it's nature, so you cannot prevent no sediment at all. So we figure out that upper pond is marked show, that should be sufficient for at least holding like a two-year storm, a normal storm that you observe. It could, it may not be able to hold like 100-year, but you know, it should be able to hold two-year storm. And to, to, at the end of the study, going on construction, we will have an operation and a maintenance manual, and we will probably recommend an annual clearing, the annual monitoring, and maybe biannual monitoring and annual cleaning. So if there are some sediments, even without a flood event, we should have a good housekeeping habit to just clean it, to reserve the room for a larger event.
I understand why we want to do it. I'm just a little bit concerned because we've had, I don't know if we were cleaning out a pond, whether we would have to be concerned about the spill of sediment, whether we would have to test it before we disposed of it, and that sort of thing. These are issues we face in our big dredging projects, so I think that's something that perhaps should be considered at some point in this. A second question I have is the amphitheater. Is that a natural amphitheater in terms of sort of a natural slope that then has benches, or is it actual construction, a building with lots of concrete? It wasn't clear from the drawing.
You want this one?
No, back one.
Okay. That's the pointer.
Dim the lights again, please.
Amphiotheater is right here, which is perfectly on the slope. It will be on the slope. This is the top of the interpretive area, and so this is just kind of sloping down. So we are putting the amphiotheater right there, kind of mingle with the nature, and it will be, it will be some concrete at the seaking or soy cement, but between the seats, it could be grass.
So it's not a real, putting a building-type thing in there, it's more just puddings and benches in circles or something?
Right, so these has to be structured. This part is the support.
But the rest of it's soft, soft?
Yeah, this is where you sit, that can be soft.
Okay.
So these can be soft. So it will be, yeah, it will be, and then the surround will be on kind of native grass or some habitat, so it will be pretty blended with it. And we have, we have to promise this, because upper Newport Bay friends had a lot of concern of amphiotheater. But because of the education needs, it's actually a good idea for children to gather together instead of spreading out all over, if they have the same materials to, for the instructor to share with many groups.
And Lon, it's 100-seat, not 150, correct?
100-seat, yeah. This one was not modified. Yeah, it's 100-seats, what we promised, the limit.
And Dave, given all of our discussions about curriculum in the Back Bay, who is responsible for the programming?
The most likely group that's going to use this is inside the outdoors, as they use it today. That's the Orange County Department of Education, involving schoolkids throughout Orange County. We have not, we have never directed their curriculum nor directed their placement. I think we would continue that process and wait and see. If this place gets crowded, we'll know, because we know what their schedule is, but basically, I'm kind of approaching a wait-and-see attitude with this, once it's in place.
Okay. And then I had a question on.
Before we move off of that, do we have some kind of contractual relationship with them, or they just call us and say they want to use the area?
They don't even call us. Remember, most of the, most of the territory that they use is fishing games, and then they'll, they'll kind of stop in different places around the bay and use that, too. And generally, even today, they're using fishing games property at Big Canyon. If this is now moved on, the amphitheater is now placed on our property, we would probably want to enter into an agreement with them, basically the process for use, and if indeed we reach a scheduling conflict, how we would deal with that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Liz.
I had a question for you, Dr. Reber, on the riparian upland, and I was kind of curious in terms of the plants that are currently there, you know, how they came to colonize that environment, and then what are the new plants that will be brought in, and what do you see as kind of the new, any new species that will be occupying those habitats?
Oh, we are not, we are not really planning to have a major planting other than the area that you see, and that's kind of what we promise, the regulatory agencies, other than remove the invasive species. So whatever that you see, the major, the major project elements that I would call tidal area, the freshwater pond, and the upper Orange County shoreline area, these are probably the major area. And what we plan to do is still using, we are not introducing any new species. We would like to maintain all the existing habitat, but just enhance it.
Okay, so you remove the invasive species, and then what's there will expand into that area?
The invasive species, if you can see, is mostly along here, along the riparian area, and that's mostly invested by pepper tree, so that will be removed and replaced by willows.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Lon, had the pepper trees get there? I think that was part of Councilmember DeGel's question as well.
Yeah. The pepper tree got here, interesting that we found a lot on the bank. So our biologists think the pepper tree is the source, largely is related to the outside of the Big Canyon. And so we are having a program, trying to talk to the homeowner to see if we can replace and replant for them a better tree in their backyard.
I think that there's a number of street trees up in the Bluffs areas that are pepper trees, but my question is, and I've asked this since your very first meeting, is how carefully have you studied flood routing to where, when we get a 1996 storm or 1969 storm that comes racing through there, that we don't wipe out a substantial amount of the improvements that we are constructing?
Well, that's the, that's what we focus on, is to have a better drainage control right at the, up the Back Bay Drive. right at the, up, the, the Back Bay Drive. Back Bay Drive at this time is in a very bad location.
I would tend to disagree with that, but, well, I know that this, this has withstood the storms. It's our maintenance access, utility access road at this location. It's a dip crossing, as you call it, an Arizona crossing and it passes low flows. It's stacks and stacks and stacks of broken curb, concrete, whatever, and I would hope that we're not going to mess with it very much in its construction. This area here is one where was a dip crossing because it allowed for the water to go through and even that didn't have enough capacity to where in this 96, it washed out this bridge up here as well as, and, and this, this came out pretty unscathed. But the main thing I'm concerned about is that if we're going to be installing a lot of lakes and, and improvements in this area and we get a big storm, will it be able to go through without substantially damaging what you're planting here, here and in this area? Well, this area here is going to be tidal, so it's not really that much of a concern. But is this going to be depressed somewhat to where when these exceed their capacity, water can flow over the top?
Well, this is actually high here, low here, so the water is, is, when it exceed the capacity, it will over, it will overflow. Our plan is to have, to have, to have this roadway base solid enough to at least sustain the, the overflow. So, overflow may occur. What we are trying to design is 100-year flow under the road, but if overflow occur, then we will provide the engineering to sustain that overflow. About this, this, this is what we are planning to take out the whole thing to rebuild.
If we need, if we have lots and lots of extra money, I guarantee that that's what it's going to cost you.
Yeah, but, but this, but this part, this part, we will have to rework just because the freshwater pond is upstream, so we will, we will need to work these as part of the embankment.
Okay.
Councilmember Webb, we'll make sure you get the hydraulic information that's going into the feasibility study and if you haven't seen it already, I'll make sure you get a copy of that if that's helpful.
Because I know that John Wayne Gulch down there where we put together a dip crossing in there, it didn't fare terribly well in 96 and had to have substantial replacements.
Well, also the restoration project, time to time, we kind of really up to the budget to determine the level of protection. If we don't have enough budget, we may not be able to sustain as a high flood event. But if we have the budget, then we can make it work. But the only thing that we cannot do is to totally line all these facilities because we will never be able to get the regulatory permit. And therefore, some, some, that's why the maintenance, all those needs to come in together, you know, as a part of the restoration project maintenance. So, these will not, the, the lake, those cannot be hard-lined. If we hard-line, then we will not be able to qualify.
The main reason why I'm particularly concerned with this crossing here is because that's the only access that our sewer maintenance trucks have to get into the sewer access road that runs all along here.
Right.
And so, we want to make sure that that roadway doesn't ever wash out and it really hasn't in the last 25 or 30 years.
Right.
So, changing it to me is a dangerous thing to do.
Well, we, we are actually not changing and even the elevation is, is, we are maintaining most of the feature the same, but we will, we will be modifying the, the base so, so that the freshwater pond can, you know, can, can, can be, can be held in the, by this embankment.
Mr. Webb?
Yes, Councilmember Webb.
Dave, who are the funding participants in this project?
Today, the major funding participants are two agencies, the State Water Resources Control Board and in directly the voters of California through Proposition 40 and Proposition 50. And then the second one is the California State Coastal Conservancy, also from the same propositions. The city is a partner to about 15% in overall cost to date. This conservancy and the state water board have paid for the 85%.
And then Dave, won't we have some foundations too?
With this project, yes. There is money set aside by the Irvine Company for the interpretive elements of this if it goes forward. And I think they've proposed, I want to say about $900,000 for the trail system, the overlooks, the benches, the amphitheater area.
Dave, on, on that funding issue, if, if this project runs over its budget, say like the Back Bay Science Center did, are we going to be stuck for paying for all the overrun or is it something that certain elements can be dropped out so it fits within the amount of money that's allocated or are these agencies going to kick in the money for the overruns?
Well, I think we're approaching this differently than the Back Bay Science Center. What Lon's last task is to bring these, bring it through permitting to, to construction documents. And then I think what we do is we'd go ahead and get some good construction estimates and then approach the funding agencies. That doesn't directly answer your question, but it gets us closer to knowing what the probable cost is of, of a project. And I think we'd ask them to go out 12 months or 18 months with their estimates. And we can indeed set it up so that certain elements of the project could be deferred later if there was not funding. We've always approached this project as a resource improvement that, that involves much more than Newport Beach, so I, I wouldn't expect the city to pay a significant share of those improvements and we've been successful thus far.
Councilman Hen?
So, the city would be expected to pay for roughly 15% of the total project cost. Is that right?
Well, that's how the previous grant projects have been working. If the state doesn't change their methodology, that's a safe assumption, Mr. Hen, yes.
Okay. And do we have any feeling for what the total cost of this project will be?
When we looked at it two or three years ago, we estimated four to five million. So, again, that was two or three years ago. I think it's safe to say it's upwards of eight to 10 at this point. Yes, the good news is that the state passed another bond measure of 5.2 billion. So, and the state has supported this project in the past, so to me, it seems like one that we would continue to support with construction funding. There's always the possibility this project could sit on the shelf until funding comes available.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead.
I guess one concern that I have is that this road is so heavily used by pedestrian and bikers, then bikers going in, in both directions. And with these curves here, I can see the bikers picking up some pretty good speeds and then that there could be conflict with pedestrians. I, I don't know what the site views are here or if there is going to be, you know, reeds or cat tails like there are now. I'm just a little concerned about the safety of those turns. It could be pretty, pretty high speeds by bikers.
Yeah, well, I think the only way we can do is to limit the speed and we will have the speed sign because there, we, we are really constrained with the area that we can, we can work with and the tidal marsh area is right here, so that's, that's, that alignment is, there, there is not...
But that's new tidal marsh. Why, why can't you just do a little bit less tidal marsh and put in a wider road?
Well, we did try this. This was the first option that we started with is to keep the, keep the, the Back Bay Drive straight and then bring tidal in here. However, you cannot see clearly, but this is a significant drop coming down and therefore, in order to make a large tidal area, we have to, we have to grade significantly. So, that, that's really ruled out by the regulatory agencies and so they voted for this option.
There's a second reason too, Lon, and that is that Councilmember Webb, you're aware of the Upper Newport Bay Ecosystem Restoration Project, of course. There's a requirement on that project that, that the project itself not result in, in a net loss of more than 10% of any one habitat. And that, the habitat value that we're most worried about is mud flat, which is a, it's a tidal mud flat. We have told the regulatory agencies that this acreage of new mud flat will be incorporated into the Upper Newport Bay Project's tally of mud flat and it gets us from 11% to 9%. So, in other words, the loss of mud flat without this project is 11% and that's higher than the project allows and we'd have to look elsewhere for mud flat.
Okay, you then, you widen the road upstream.
And that's a possibility.
Because you've got a lot of restoration area up there to where there's no reason why you can't do it. But I agree with Homer that when you have a roadway with virtually a 90-degree turn, that that's going to be a, a high accident location because of the conflicts.
Yeah, although this corner here, I mean, this...
Pretty sharp.
It's a dangerous corner.
Councilmember DeGel and I have discussed a billy dome-style turn so that bikers could really whip around that, that one, but nobody else liked that, I guess, except that.
Yeah, what we are going to do is to have a stop sign, to have the stop, to have the completed stop at the turn and then, then move on and then the stop at the...
You obviously don't ride a bicycle because you don't stop where, unless it's...
We're going to have to talk about this one further, Lon.
And that's a, that's not a...
It's also impossible to afford.
I'm talking about the vehicle. For the vehicle, we are going to have the low-speed limit control in the, in the stop sign. But then for the, for the biker, yeah, for the biker, for the biker, we, we cannot control the biker.
But you may, may want to consider just having a pedestrian lane too. That would be just for pedestrians.
Well...
You know, I mean, right now, there's a lane and it's almost like a bike lane whenever there are cars going, going north. But if you just had a pedestrian lane, that may help the safety issue.
How comfortable do we feel with the 35-space parking lot being adequate in that we're improving and putting in facilities that will perhaps draw more people into the entire area? Just going from 35 to 35 doesn't sound like it's prudent planning.
But the 35 parking lots seems are underutilized today and we are really subject to the critiques about bringing in any larger infrastructure and that's why we decide to keep the same parking lot space. And most of the user were schoolchildren and they come by bus, not the vehicle.
I think it works better for the habitat. We're going to have a meeting up in the Bluffs. I know I see one of the neighbors here, which is great. So, if the community is okay with a road alignment, I'd be okay with it. I, I understand what the habitat value is, the enhancement there, but we definitely do want to run it by the neighborhoods up there.
Right.
I also, Councilmembers, I like the concept of looking at a potentially slightly wider road to accommodate the uses fairly as Homer notes and as Mr. Webb notes.
At least in the new areas that we're constructing. I'm not sure, I don't think you can change it any, on either side, but I think that we end up creating problems for ourselves if we construct something new that we know is inadequate.
Okay, is there any more report?
No, sir.
Any further questions with council? Okay, I'll open up for public comment.
I'm Pat Crone. I'm here today representing the Nevada Homeowners Association where my, where I own property. I understood we had a choice as whether to come to the meeting on August 1st or come here. Well, I couldn't come in, so I came here and now I don't see the room bursting with people who are interested, although I'm sure out there, they're, they're out there. I can tell you that V18 homeowners in our condominium association are very interested. Most of the other owners are apartment owners and they're kind of hard to reach, I guess. They're not residents. It's been hard for me to understand from, from this map just how this will be affecting our property. I can say with great joy that it certainly is going to be an enhancement for the city to have this wonderful park and all you're doing to upgrade the area. I know I enjoy the area very much and I go down there and watch the birds and watch the fish jump. It'll be nice to have a place to park and a place to sit and an interpretive center and better paths and everything, so this sounds wonderful. I'm interested in knowing at the same time how this additional attraction is going to affect the park where our property is. And I say that because I'm really concerned at the idea of bringing more attention and more people into the area. We've already had break-ins and lots and lots of trespassing and bad things you don't want to hear about. Our property is on Amigos Way. It's the buildings that are nearest Jamboree and we look right out on Park Newport. That gives you an idea of where we are, what paths or roads or access will be available that far up from the Back Bay. I can't tell from the map.
Dave?
Would you help me? Yeah, I would be happy to go over this map and the hard copy with you. The intent is that the more passive uses, the more walking and running uses are farther back where, so there wouldn't be a paved public road anywhere near where, where the, your HOA is.
When you say near the back, you mean near the bay?
Sorry, no, I'm thinking, I always think of the back of the park as closer to Jamboree.
I said, why? I mean, I don't think of myself in that part.
Do you have the pointer? No, I just wanted the pointer. There's a pointer. Yeah, so if, so Pat, the, this trail network is the trail network where folks would have to be hiking or running. They wouldn't be in a car.
Point to the end.
This is what I consider as the Jamboree in the backside.
Where are the first buildings there on your...
You're the first buildings here?
You can go a little slower and you're right on the point.
Okay, so this point here, right?
The bay's looking around, it looks like a little L.
The bay's looking this way. You want to use the pointer? Hit, hit that top one. Top one there.
I'm not getting any results.
Guide my hand then.
Okay.
Right there, okay.
Now, what is this?
So, so that is a, a trail that doubles as a maintenance road for our sewer, there's an OCSD sewer facility back there. So, it'd be...
Where exactly is the water flow coming?
The water flow comes down the center here.
I look over my balcony and I see water flow.
Yeah, that wouldn't change. The riparian stays the same. It's just improved with the exotics removed. And this trail exists today too, because we've been out and walked on it. That wouldn't change.
All the purple trails exist, do they not, Dave?
Right.
But there is no trail that goes right past our property.
But I've, I've walked there. It's a smaller trail.
I've walked through there too.
Yeah.
Maybe Lon was meant to be involved with you and I don't want to take these people's time.
I'll sit down with you and we'll go over that maybe then onsite.
What I want most to hear is that there's not going to be any increased public access to the area.
Well, but the nature of this project is to bring more people to the nature park, but to bring them in in a passive way, in a hiking-type, bird-watching, walking way.
And you think they're going to be hiking and bird-watching that close to Jamboree?
I don't think the bird value is, is good back there. They're going to be closer to the interpretive area and to the wetlands and to the tidal marsh.
I'm just talking about safety.
And plus, they'd have to work hard to get back to where you are.
They do. They work real hard now because there's no trail. Well, I'm looking forward to, I mean, a better understanding of how this will, will affect us so that I can report to our board.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else that would speak on this issue? Anybody else that would like to speak on this issue?
My name is Diana Blasier. I live in the Bluffs, and I walk down into the Back Bay, excuse me, almost every day. So I think I'm pretty familiar with traffic flow, and I'm also a retired planner from another city, so I've, and I've been living there for 10 years. I don't think you need to be that concerned about the bicycles. The biggest concern are the vehicles who rarely ever pay attention to the speed limit. And I, you know, I'm walking on Back Bay Road at least four times a week, weekends, during the weekdays. Like, for instance, there was a function there this morning, and there were a number of parents dropping off children in the parking lot, and I would, I would guess that none, or maybe one of them, followed the speed limit. And, and that is something that I see constantly. In fact, I sometimes tell people to slow down, especially on the weekends. It's really hazardous with all, you know, especially with children on the bicycles and so forth. So that, from that standpoint, I don't, I don't think bicyclists are a problem. I think possibly, in terms of widening that, as the road is, is curving around the realigned road, making it a little wider because of ingress egress with other, with vehicles, that, that might be helpful, but, and, and putting a stop sign to, to control the vehicles is going to do little good either, because half of them, like the bicycles, will probably ignore it from that standpoint. As far as like the invasive species, yeah, there's a lot of pepper trees not only growing, they not only have been part of the landscape in the Bluffs, but are growing wild along the slope area where the service road goes up into the Bluffs. And one of the things that I, since I have the microphone, an opportunity here is that city crews come up and clean sometimes the culvert, and they leave. There are dead branches there from the, from the branches they cut. They leave a lot of debris, which I, which I've been very concerned about from a hazardous standpoint. I'm also on the landscape committee of the Bluffs, and we're working very hard to improve the policies in terms of using drought tolerant and native plants, and working with other agencies. For example, I've been in contact with the, the Back Bay, the Nature Center, to have them provide us with a list of plants that we should not plant, like pampas grass, which is a major problem, as, as anyone knows, in the, in the Back Bay. And, and so we're, you know, we're really concerned about that and working with the other agencies, and, so I'm glad to have the opportunity to let you know of, of our goals there.
You make some excellent points, and I hope you'll be able to enjoy, join us at the August 1 meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, since we're talking about perhaps widening that, the new road, we might want to consider the bumps there, if, at least keep the cars and buses, because I don't think we're going to have a lot of fire trucks going through there, hopefully, but we need, I mean, I know that's a concern in some neighborhoods, so.
Okay, anybody else that'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, one--
Should we say something from here? I agree 100% on the cars. They are the problem, the death threats of life.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Seeing no one, we'll close the public comments, and council, have any further direction to staff on this item? Okay?
I think it's a nice project. I'm, I'm hoping to see it, hoping to see the funds there.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you, consultants. All right, it's 5 o'clock.
Yeah, we, we could do this next time if you'd like, coming to.
Yeah, I think maybe we, we need to be safe as far as the closed session is concerned.
I think so as well. So why don't we--
Unless somebody came for this item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Unless anyone else came for this, for this item, I don't think they did.
They did.
They did.
Ray's just one of our good friends.
Okay.
Thank you, Ray. Okay, so we will continue item number two to our next council meeting. All right, public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Anybody here want to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we adjourned to 7 o'clock. Yeah.